How are you doing?
This been an evening. Apparently I pocket ordered a bunch of stuff. My wife is not too happy about it, but she caught it. I got it all canceled. Exactly. She's like, I'm she she come into town for a haircut and drive off and the look on her face.
Cousin called.
Yeah, we'll get a haircut today.
We can get out of town. Seventy six four. And it's fully restored. Field switch. Designate. The wrong takes. And that's what we've been discussing.
Today's pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. But the role called show is Pam on here?
Yes, she's on.
Pammy is on. We are zooming all present. We do have a. You have a forum. Those who would like to join me in first please. Lord master of the universe. Hope you look down upon us favorably tonight as we. Uh, struggle with the and deal with. And with the city's uh issues and give us guidance to make sure we do what's best for our city. Uh, this I ask you, Lord, in your name, amen. Now a motion to approve the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Councilman Stettler.
Second.
Proven and second by Councilman White to approve the agenda.
Oh.
Any further questions?
Uh, discussion.
Some amendments I need to.
All we have, we need amendment.
Yep. Um, so mission be under.
Would you like to remove your motion exactly?
No, I'll just amend that.
Okay. Amendment motion, no.
So we need to add one.
New business.
We.
Not there.
Yeah.
Business.
A hard truth.
Miss budget.
Budget.
Okay.
New business. And then also we need to add.
I brought a couple.
Was there a thing there? Um, what was the other item we had to add on there?
Did you try to?
Inside the uh. Budget amendment.
Budget amendment. There was another item.
We have another bill we want to add?
No, we have that. Oh, I needed to amend the resolution to twenty five dash zero zero one. I misnumbered it. That was that. Right.
Actual. This resolution A.
Correct.
Versus twenty.
It needs to be uh. So.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I remember that we amend. I move that we amend the agenda. Uh, number twelve A. Needs to state. Resolution number twenty five dash zero zero one instead of the twenty twenty four fourteen. And also to add under new business. The budget amendment number one.
Oh, and also. New business change order.
Oh, and also under. New business at B for change order number four. Is my motion.
Change on budget amendment number one. Is that under new business also?
Under uh new business. Oh, we already have it. The and A, so B would be.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
Budget amendment number one and C. Would be change order number four. I was on the wrong screen. And then and I am changing the name of the resolution to the proper name.
Any further discussion on the?
Wait a second.
On the amendment. Oh, second on the amendment.
I'll second.
Been second by Councilman Nordean. Any further discussion on the agenda as amendments? None being all favors say aye?
Aye.
Both the same. Motion passed on affirmative. Uh. Any communication, anybody online from innovation from citizens?
Just uh. Councilman.
Okay. Uh. Consent agenda approval of the minutes July twenty second twenty twenty five to July twenty fifth twenty twenty five special meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes of our July twenty second twenty twenty five and our July twenty fifth twenty twenty five. Minutes.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Nordean. Any further discussion on on A on consent agenda? None being all favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, both the same. Motion passed on the affirmative. Approval of the bill July twenty third twenty twenty five to August twelve twenty twenty five. Have a motion to approve the bills.
I move that we approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Nordine to approve the bill, second by Councilman Stetler to approve the bill. Further discussion?
I'm I'm not quite through some interros.
That's all. You got you got plenty of time.
There is a lot of them this time. Three week cycles.
Chris, this is probably for you chiefs. Um, about two thirds of the way down the page, there's a PayPal. Um, payment for FBI command college trailer, is that right?
Uh, training.
Training.
Casper, it's the uh every two years um it's the. Through um. Let's see. And uh and they have been charged with Quantico that put on the command college for uh operation on law enforcement. And they do it once every two years in Wyoming. Uh, it's actually a thousand dollars, not five thousand. Um. But it was the last item that was entered from that credit card, but the payment is through PayPal.
Okay. This is Chris, what that was for?
Yes, it's a a focus on leadership and um. Communication with the. Inter agencies and. Yeah, yeah, that's it. Pretty good. Pretty top notch training.
I would hope so. So where was it at?
Casper.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't get to go to Virginia or anything like that. They they come here.
I don't think you'd want to be in Virginia this.
Probably not.
That's a wet hot.
Yeah.
Well, the humidity, it's.
Yeah.
Heat index will kill you. Gross plants and.
I haven't run across any concerns.
Need concerns that we all. Still review. Take my time.
Yes, I have one. Quick set auto ninety nine Chevy ten.
That is one of our, we've had some with our newer vehicles, we've had. I think I think we have, we still may have two of our new trucks down. With the ninety nine Chevy and then that also the the Dodge. Also it had some issues. They're they're working on it to get it up and serviceable. We've had two of our service trucks go down. One of them were waiting several months on for parts. And uh and they haven't. And uh. That's Mike, Mike, the one Mike Quiver was driving and the one that Mike Litch is driving went down also in Riverton. And they're they were troubleshooting and trying to figure out what's wrong with it. But both were new. Newer trucks are down.
And I'm aware of that. I I. Letch had reached out to me and made me aware of his situation. Or the situation with the maintenance department regarding that aspect. Um. I'm just wondering what the.
Since Bart struck.
That's one Bart's driving, yes.
Okay, so did it need a window and then? A windshield or something or?
Yeah.
I think I I. I remember.
It was the main windshield. It was a. It was that crack all the way through the all the way across.
I remember him. Or the tail end of winter driving that and it. Having plastic taped up on a side window.
Yeah, I mean, it says tint on there, but it actually it was a new window. I'm sure they asked put tint on as well, but.
I just was wondering, I just was wondering what that was for a ninety nine. That's all I was.
Yeah.
I didn't I didn't know.
Yeah, that's one. We got two older service trucks. We have the old the Dodge diesel. And they developed an issue last winter. Yeah, we're also we really need that that nine ninety nine Chevy really needs a new front seat. Again, I would get a pretty good out of junkyard. It's a pick and pull down in China for about a. About a hundred bucks. Well, I've got to take it out.
I I got a really nice seat out of the junkyard in Riverton for a Dodge Dakota. And I had to pick and pull it, and I think it was like sixty or eighty bucks.
Right.
That was for my little brother's Dodge Dakota. Not maybe they have a seat for it. I don't know. Maybe there is another truck of that nature. Anyways, that's the only one that. Not that it was a concern mine. I just was curious what the ninety nine was.
But yeah, that's it. Bart likes it.
Well, I got. I make a motion to approve bills.
It's been moved.
Been moved. We're just. No further discussion. All favors say aye to approve the two uh bill July twenty third twenty twenty five, August twelve twenty twenty five. Say aye?
Aye.
Aye, both the same. Motion passed on the affirmative. Uh. Neander down the west. Uh, resolution A. Twenty twenty five dash one WWDC level three. Chris, you want to talk about that?
Um, sure, that's uh. Um. Deadline for applications we received. It was funding for our second first. On the first step in this process, it is the uh. Submission of a resolution. For that project, um. The level three comes from the level one and level two feasibility and physical caring studying this the actual funding and construction apparatus level. Uh, so a resolution number twenty five dash zero zero one. A resolution authorizing an application to the Wyoming Water Development Commission for funding of the level three she showing transmission line rupture and well number six surge correction project. Whereas the governing body for the town should show any desires to participate in the Wyoming Water Development Commission project. Agreement to assist in financing this project. And whereas the governing bodies for the town should show you recognizes the need for the project to include a new ten inch transmission line with fittings and pipe bedding. And downhole gas disruptor for well six. And whereas the Wyoming Water Development Commission requires that certain criteria be met and to the best of the town should showing his knowledge, this project meets those criteria. And whereas the governing body of the town should showing recognizes and supports the need for this project and submit all this grant application. And whereas the governing body of the town should showing agrees to participate in the project with the Wyoming Water Development Commission. And meet financial obligations from the town should showing's water enterprise fund. And now therefore be resolved by the governing body of the town should showing. That the town should showing agrees to participate in paying for up to thirty three percent of the total project cost in the amount of four hundred ninety five thousand two hundred fifty dollars. To assist in the funding of the showing transmission line rupture and roll number six surge correction project. Be it further resolved that Joel Highsmith, mayor, Kim Riley clerk, Mike Liver, public works director. Chris Kojai grant coordinator are hereby designated as the authorized representatives of the town should showing to act on behalf of the governing body of all management related to these projects.
And have a motion to approve. Moving forward with our level three.
Move we approve resolution number twenty five dash zeros are one.
Then can I have a second move by Councilman Stetler?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Nordean. Discussions.
And just for clarification, the thirty three percent of the project cost uh comes by way of a loan. Uh, could be up to, I believe, fifty years in length. Um, we just completed paying off our last loan uh from thirty years ago. Um, which was nine thousand nine hundred dollars a a year. Um, so the thirty three percent that we pay would be through that loan apparatus through the Wyoming um. Water Development Commission. Not upfront uh cash per se. And it's a low interest loan, and so it's not like a typical loan through a bank.
It was hard to hear, Chris. I'm sorry. What was what is it? I didn't ask this question. Totally ignorance. So this is a a part of our grant.
Uh, so the state of Wyoming um paid for the level one study, which basically looks at the. Issues and problems in the town. Uh, that was, I think, about two hundred thousand dollars, um somewhere in that vicinity.
I believe a little more than that.
It might have been more than that. Um, and then the state of Wyoming also pays for the level two. Study which starts getting into the engineering and the identification of the, which we had uh Jim Corrers brief us on here.
Yeah, the level two is expensive.
Right. Um, and then after all that comes together, then um level three is actually taking those projects that were identified. And putting them into construction. Um. Through the assistance with WWDC, which is the Wyoming Water Development Commission.
During the initial level. Level one is identified that we had. Something breaking our lines. Was causing surge whether it's gas and or they looked at many things. So they they did a. They so they did a study. Level two to engineer look at. That's what Jim Gorges is up here talking about, you know, quite a bit about that. And so you get all of that done. And then we move on on that information to the level three is actually construction and that that's on on the line. That uh that 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 we keep bursting. And uh to to fix that problem. And so that's it's just uh. So then you move into a move into a level level three. So it, you know. It's sort of a time consuming deal, but that's that's the way they do it. You identify the problem and then figure out how to fix it to level two, the engineering level three to actually fixing it.
And then um type or bursting thing at?
Near it's below. The water tank near well six. I'll have we take care of it. If you'd like to take.
But also included in this application is um when our well improvement project.
Yes.
Um. By the time it actually when we initially submitted the the application and was awarded the grant through SLIB. The cost of things had got up thirty forty percent in some cases, so we had to scale back. The wells, and so this actually brings that well six back into it into the fold to get that updated as well.
We did not have the funding to do well six. When when the prices came in, so we're at at the.
Scale back.
We had to scale it back to work with the money. So well six, that doesn't have a new well house. Either, so that's also in this.
Okay, so this brings well six up to the standard.
Oh, great.
Four.
Mm hmm. Yeah, well.
As well as fixing that transmission mine and the surging issue um. That causes the ruptures that we've experienced over the years.
So. But that's uh. But this is all, this is all needed.
Right.
And like like Chris said, everything's. Prices just skyrocketed. What we're. What we're dealing with. But you know, we was able. When we put our sewer line in through valued engineering. That that's how we got their sewer lines. Found a cheaper way to do it. This is what's proposed now, and I don't know if there is a cheap way, but our sewer line, we they they are the engineer we hired. Uh. Discovered a a cheaper way to do it and they allow us to use the funding to go into our subdivision with sewer.
Okay.
That's how we did that. We had leftover money. Instead of giving it back there. And they take it back. They say, yeah, go ahead and use it. That subdivision is a good idea. Yeah. Okay. So, you know, this is what we're looking at with a hope without underestimating this and everything is. What we're we're funding, we're looking for, but I think we're pretty. Comfortable. With HTR put this estimate together. That's correct, right?
What's that? Sorry.
HCR did this estimate.
Um, yes. From the level two.
Yeah. To move forward to the level three, right? Yeah, so we got finished the level two and Jim Gorges retired. And so HTR took over and moved forward on this level three. That's kind of. Any other? Questions? This is, this is a good timing. Uh, get it in. September. Zero. Yeah, I can't remember. There are November meeting. This would be awarded in or is it December meeting? Got one.
Um.
I'm trying to remember. I. Maybe November, we got another in December. There's another.
Yeah.
There's another deadline to get an application in. But it's I think it's good to get this in.
That's for the level two, I think it's December, isn't it?
Could be. Too many dates.
But I do know when you have this done by September first, so.
So anyway, but this is, yeah. This is good, good timing for us. So we have our money next year to deal with this. And it'd be good to get well six. Up and running it good and 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 and. Figure out something that we don't have another. Breakage in the next year or two. You never know, because it's sporadically, I we. We had four breaks, I think, providing the last ten, twelve years.
But two in the last five years.
Yeah. They want to make such a big hole we lost to pick up in it. Yeah. I'm I'm sure glad I didn't go down that road and. You know. Mike Deener, I'd been down on my personal pickup. I was out there in my personal pickup driving around trying to find the lead. Glad one meter found it.
Don't expect to be going in a. In a great hole.
No, no. Any further discussion? None being all favors say aye?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Motion passed on the affirmative. Economic Development Committee A two A.
Do we have early permits?
They have permits. Oh, yeah, I just skipped the permits. Yeah, we do. Uh, permits, building permit, Mark Roman, twelve ninety eight California Street, deck edition.
I move we approve the building permit.
Been moved by Councilman Stettler to approve the building permit with Mark Roman. Have a second.
Second.
And second by Councilman White. Are any discussion? I talked to him. He just replacing what he had. He tore it down and he just needed to be an upgrade. Any further discussion? None being all favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye, both the same motion for affirmative. Building license. That that building license or supposed to be a business license.
Business license.
That's what I thought. Business license, desert in love hotels. You have some information on that, Chris?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So this um business license. Um, and this business um for all intents and purposes is not operating. It's. There's nobody there manning it. Um. But. I have some serious concerns with the business practices that's being employed by. This uh company. Um, we've had five. Travelers. That have booked. A room with them and show up and then. Obviously, it's closed and there's nobody there to man it. And then when they call the number for. Troubleshooting. Uh. A person that speaks broken English answers. And then hangs up the phone and. Refuses to refund their money or deal with them. Um. We've opened up a uh. Uh, an inquiry, a law enforcement inquiry on this company. Uh, they also the town uh fifteen hundred dollars in uh water bills. Um, so I. Would request that uh this business license, not that it can stop them from. Advertising and whatnot, but I don't feel that the talent should show he should. Be um. Condoning that type of business practice in town and dissociate ourselves from that business. By revoking the business license.
Agreed.
Then I will motion to revoke the business license, the Desert Inn. Uh, loves hotels.
They don't currently have one, do they?
They do.
They do.
That's.
Yep.
Oh, I I move we revoke the business license.
Been moved by Councils, that are second by Councilman Ordain that we we revoke the business license. Because um. The soundness practices or not practices becoming. You know, in a business in good standing, I don't know the exact order. Do you want to help him with that?
I think it's uh.
Michael came with that.
Well, I think the big thing is the fact that they owe the town money. It's a reason enough right there, so.
Because I didn't list any reasons in the motion.
Oh, okay. Do we need reasons or just revoke it? And then I will go with.
Well, yeah, I mean, you still need to discuss it a bit, you know, so it's not an arbitrary and capricious decision, but. As to why.
Was I in discussion? I thought.
My standpoint, obviously, if they're un unethical and and paying their their. Their commitments that are owed to the town uh outside of what they're doing. Is the first concern for me, if they can't pay their bills, uh, I don't know how they justify being a business. Sounds like bankruptcy probably knocking on the door. Uh, secondly, if you're uh doing things that are unethical. Obviously, that's being looked into by the police department, but I don't think that's something we wanna. Not saying we're promoting or allowing, but uh it's not not a good. Painted picture for our town or or anybody that's passing through our town and. In a little place like this, as we know, quote unquote, how quick the speed trap thing took off. And how how that uh could or couldn't be uh. How that was perceived in in a negative context for some and and for those that live here, we were certainly. Taking it as a positive, right? But um with this situation, I I don't think it's something we want to. Take lightly, so I I think we definitely need to set the precedence here. And if you're a business that can't pay your bills. And uh in conjunction to doing what's right. I'm not going to support that type of behavior. I feel like, and I guess I'd say we, but I won't support that type of behavior. So that's what I have to say about it.
Any more discussion?
What's best for Shoshone? You know, we can't have a business like this.
No.
I mean, that just gives us bad reputation.
Yes, it does.
I just feel that uh because of the conduct and behavior, um even if it does continue. At least the town can say that we aren't associated with this group and we are. Not allowing them. That's a separate issue, but it. You know, separates us from the town of Shoshone from that behavior. Hopefully.
Well, thank you. You've done what needed to be done when you became aware of it.
Yes.
I guess my next question is if they don't have a this, an active business license with us to our town attorney. And they're trying to conduct business, what what's our next steps there? If they continue to promote and advertise that they have rooms, but don't have an active business license because it's been pulled.
Yeah, I'll have to go through our town ordinances, but we will have to take legal action. Keep doing it and seeking injunction in court.
And the nature of the uh expanding upon. What I said earlier, um, I can talk about it offline, um, but I can't talk about it necessarily in public, uh, the other aspects of that, but.
Any more discussions? None being all papers say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Both the same, she passed on the affirmative. Now we go down to new business, I missed something. The Economic Development Committee A two A. Uh, that is something. Yeah, I let Mark, you want to take the lead on that and something we. Do you want me to take the lead? You.
Yeah. Please take the lead.
Okay, this is something we had the A two A, we had a good group. And uh we end up going down to Casper then for, was it six weeks or ten? We we met every week and. We looked at trying to solve problems. We thought one of the best thing that came out of it was our, the group working together. On looking at solving problems and help looking at economics, development, land sales, I mean. So we felt that we had a a pretty good group and I think that. That group could continue on. Uh, and yeah, and I won't be on it and Mark will be leading it, but we get at least two. We got a couple interested in being part of two to five people. And make it so it's just sort of a, it was just sort of a mayor Orioles committee for that project. But I think we ought to make it more have a have a more of a committee permanent. Yeah, that's appointed by the government, you know, that's what I pointed you through, you know, but it was sort of what we need to just. Make it more permanent and suggest it was a flat one project. And let's let that product, you know, to help. Be a buffer between the rest of the council on stuff can help. Yes, with some of that and you use other minds out there to help us move forward. And Mark agreed to chair that. And uh. I just, I I think it's just a real good idea and we, I think we worked really well. We have uh. Len Thompson works real hard, probably can't. Can't make it. Uh, we had a lady from Hudson that helped us out. We too busy. Yeah, she 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 can't make it either. Marilyn Midhour, you know, she's really. Very energetic, but she's spread pretty thin and uh so. Like Mark can find you some helpers and we can, I think, help the town. Built some of the economic developments and real estate, most stuff that we have sort of help out. Was thoughts of that, that's sort of rounded up, Mark?
It does. I think uh it'd be nice to so for you, me, John, for sure, because John would get down again to uh just sit down and kind of.
Yes.
Talk what what your vision would be for this in more detail. If that's all right.
Yeah.
But I had some ideas, so.
Okay, yeah, I I hope that's sort of where we go on with that. And then you can see next councilor or something if we can, we got better better. Put together, John got a new job. Yeah, we work on Reverend, so they quoted in Lander. Yep. Okay, that is uh. But we all. I think I think timing is relatively good to to get this moving forward. Any thoughts, ideas? Jordan? Any suggestions?
On people, I could probably throw some names in the hat or something.
That'd be good.
I don't know of any. At the moment, you'd have to let me dig in my.
Well, yeah.
File cabinet up here somewhere.
Yeah, well, that's uh your volunteerism is hard to hard hard to get.
That's the thing, I have a. Some come to mind, but I don't know if it would work with their schedules, you know.
Okay.
That would be the catcher thing.
Well, it's people. Everybody involved or probably have jobs, so.
Yeah.
You know, so they gotta work. Round around that, but I I think next you're doing something like it. Didn't hurt. Kind of go through the weeds and sort some stuff out, bounce off good ideas, you know what I mean, there's.
You thinking about that list and that John and me sit down and talk with Joel, kind of get the vision, then we'll usher that.
Yeah.
And then you can see if these people would fit in that's.
Absolutely, yeah, certainly.
Yep. That was. That was kind of. That that was that, so we. We'll table anything on that till next meeting. There was just some for Tom says, I guess I could have put it down on round table also, but yeah, we're not taking any action.
Yeah.
We're just talking.
Absolutely.
So uh budget budget amendment number one, since you want to.
Sure, uh, some quick uh. I'm gonna touch on it in the police report, but uh does that do with the unexpected change in personnel? Costs associated with that that was not planned during the budget process. Uh, the town Shoshone FY twenty six budget, uh, which was adopted on June twenty four, twenty twenty five. Left an allocated balance of general fund revenues of twenty thousand six hundred ninety seven dollars. Um, during that budget process, if you remember, each department was tasked with reducing expenditures. Um, for the previous year funding levels, which were. About where where it was found that they were no longer needed. Um, at the time, the police department was fully staffed and submitted budget proposals consistently within the department at that time. Uh, on July twenty second, twenty twenty five, Officer Smith submitted his intention to resign effective July thirty first, twenty twenty five. As he accepted a position with the Navarre County Sheriff's Office. Uh, Sergeant Moss with the Fremont County Sheriff's Office, uh, having previously submitted an application for employment with the Shonan Police Department last year. Was notified of an uh an opening. Which had occurred within that year window and uh he had. Then uh took that position. The position itself is a grant funded from the uh Department of Justice for investigator slash task force uh. Officer, so it's not a position that's uh intended for a. A new officer with no skill set or no prior experience. It's intended for an experienced officer with specific skill sets and abilities. And being that it's grant funded, it has to be filled, it's can't leave it all in.
Someone similar capabilities.
Correct.
Yes.
Um, but. At any rate, um. The unforeseen circumstances uh required a revaluation of the funding levels to accommodate a new officer. Uh, which includes firearms, uniforms and insurance line items. Uh, Officer Smith had declined the health insurance. Um, so we didn't budget for that. The town pays the employees.
Yes.
Health insurance. Um, so. That was not accounted for in the budget, um, as well as uh. Uniform budget, firearms budget was cut, do you remember about fifty percent on both because at the time we were needing anything new. Um, and so the financial impact uh of increasing the health insurance would be nine thousand one hundred ninety seven dollars and forty three cents. This costs, however, this cost could be partially offset. By a reduction in employee retirement, you know, to three thousand one hundred twenty dollars, which will save because Officer Smith had been here for a number of years. And so the town picked up every year a small percentage of his retirement, and so that comes back from the center. And that would leave a net increase of six thousand seventy seven dollars and forty three cents. And then the increasing of the uniform line item amount of fifteen hundred for the purchase of a ballistic best panels. Um, obviously, Officer Smith was that tall and there. So, um. I mean, it would cover you. It's a big panel, but um kind of hard to sit on it when it's above your head. Um, and also firearms, um, aspects of that. And the uniform approximately fifteen dollars for the uh ballistic best panels and proper uh pant size and shirt size. Um, the firearms, um, the amount of three thousand Officer Smith, he's a personal firearm, so we. Need to provide a fire. Um, and also less lethal option, uh, taser. It's, we don't have uh one of those extra. And then other related equipment like holster and, you know, just minor odds and ends, uh, estimated about three thousand dollars. The full amount of requested is ten thousand five hundred and seventy seven dollars and forty three cents. The, I took a look at alternatives, uh, how they work. Um, the discretionary spending levels between the police department for FY twenty six budget. Uh, are remaining as two thousand eight hundred and one dollars, and that would not cover the needed costs for the equipment and. And the insurance and would leave the police department unable to function in the year. Um, we'd have no fun. We'd have nothing left. We wouldn't be able to buy paper clips. Without having to go to clerk and beg her to borrow me some money. Um, so there's, I didn't, at this time, there's no other options available for this specific situation. Uh, so the recommendation is to increase the insurance line item by six thousand seventy seven dollars and forty three cents. The firearms line item by three thousand and the uniform line item by fifteen hundred. To provide for the proper outfitting of the new officer and adequate funding of the health insurance budget item within the police department.
Did Sergeant Moss, is he still interested?
He already started.
We've hired him.
Okay, there we go, yeah.
Yep.
All right, so um this firearms budget. When an officer at the Easter, they take the firearms with them?
So you can use your own firearm. Um, our policy allows you to. If you don't like our firearms that we provide or we have, or if we don't have one. You can use your firearms, so up to between nine millimeter and forty five caliber. So you can't have like a Desert Eagle, but you could.
They're very practical anyway.
But if you wanted to carry a uh. A nineteen eleven, yeah, nineteen eleven or or a similar type uh uh pistol. Um, as a personal firearm, you could do so. Uh, but we provide as a department a nine millimeter, um, so we're all uniform, all interchangeable, everything is the same within the police department. Um, is what we provide. Um, so we're just on firearm short. So he's using his own gun right now, but.
So Officer.
Smith.
Smith.
Yeah, he had his own gun.
So therefore we didn't have that expenditure for him.
Correct.
Okay.
And he was fine with that. So at the time, there was no need to budget to buy one because it was kind of unexpected and um. Yeah, so that's kind of the nature of the beast at this point is that we just didn't plan for.
Just was curious about that. I didn't know what best practice was, I didn't know that was handled, so.
I, yeah, I, we always leave that option there because ultimately. When it comes to lethal force. Having an officer that's comfortable with their firearm is more important than me forcing them to carry something that. They may not be comfortable with. Um, so we leave that option to carry personal firearms for that reason, but.
But we're willing to make them. Take a brick, I mean a Glock for a firearm, right?
So eh, it shoots and it's it's reliable. But yes, um.
All the videos I've watched online magazine capacity is is the number decide, the deciding factor.
Which is why we don't want nine millimeter. Um, also, um, the P three twenty, it just kind of, uh, you know, they say guns don't kill people, except with. P three twenty, it kills people. We don't carry that one.
Good.
I was an officer, I I like a nineteen eleven, that's what I carry, it's uncomfortable. Got smaller hands and fists that wider, that I was comfortable. But I got to extend saying my duty.
Are these uh? Glock seventeens or nineteenth or which ones are they?
Seventeens.
Why not the nineteen X?
Because Glock seventeen is a, it's a, we were able to add modifications like RDS, red dot sights and stuff to that, um.
Can't do the nineteen, you see mine? And it carries two more bullets in the standard clip.
Move, we address the uh budget amendment number one by following the recommendation as presented. Been moved by Councilman Stettler when we approved that recommendation and presented by Chief. Then second by. By councilman. Uh. Uh.
Right now.
Right now.
Warrior.
JW.
Yeah, JW, fighter. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have one, uh, on the bonus piece. Uh, should have a little bit of money coming back. And that aspect that maybe. Will help some too, however, that factors in there because. Now.
The boss is still for whoever's here full time.
Rated, pro rated as where Matt's was going to be a little bit larger for being the whole year, right?
I think we just. Made it all the same for, at the time when we talked about it, it was, there wasn't any prorating, it was just.
Okay.
Whoever's here full time. And then dividing it by. The amount that the council approved. Divided by the amount of employees.
Okay, I, I figured it was prorated type situation, but. No, no skin, no, we don't have to go down the dark hallway there. I guess I, anyway, all right, move on.
Any further discussion? None being all personally, I, I will say motion passed on affirmative test. Uh. Change order number four. Um.
This actually was brought by, uh, Mike Wimmering. It was kind of an item that was missed during the. Planning and engineering, something as simple as a gate. Um, there's other options, but, um. This is the most. Sense. Makes the most sense, um, and. It's eighteen hundred and forty five dollars, but. The other options would be less. Uh, maybe half is. Half the cost nine hundred bucks instead of eighteen hundred, but. Practicality of it and, and doing it the right way. We're spending all this money on it. We should at least do it the right way. So that's kind of what this is. Um.
This is a gate for where?
It's the, it's the spacing between the fence and the electrical equipment on the building, um. And it's not a gate, so they were talking about just blocking it off.
In.
But.
Palpuses or?
Yeah, well, well, it's number five, sorry.
Okay.
Um. But having the gate on there would actually give the accessibility, it would be properly done and then not.
How big's the gate?
Um. That I don't know exactly the size of it.
But the problem is that we have electrical panel. It's too close to the fence and if electric is going to work on it, there's, you need to open the gate to leave. More, more room.
Only, only reason I ask is because of my location. On Chauvin Road, it's being tore down and there's. Eight foot tall fence with several gates. It's coming out. Fence is two years old. That's why I wonder how old the gate, is it fencing? Is it chain link? How big is the gate?
Chain link out there.
Yeah, I believe it's chain link.
If, if you knew how big the gate was. It could be a free gate. They could still install it, but it's a free gate. Cause it's the gates that we installed there or had installed were like eight hundred bucks a piece for that eight foot tall gate.
It's pre COVID eight hundred bucks a piece, I assume.
Yes. So I, I'm saying it's, it's gonna just.
No, I, I get what you're saying. I just.
Right now, it's gonna get put into a scrap bin and go down the road.
But without Mike here to give the specifics. You know, if it's gonna work or not gonna work and, um.
What size is your gate, do you know?
I don't know.
I don't know.
We knew that, we could ask. If we approved the change order and it came in last after it was approved, that wouldn't be an issue, I don't think.
Well, we could.
We've been less.
Yeah, we can approve the change order and then if we get information. Um, that it's gonna, that would work, then we can just not go through with it.
Well, that you'd have to go through part of it because they added labor.
Yeah, they saw, yeah, but it would maybe save some money.
Is the fence at, uh, well, house number five, is it already up installed?
Um. Not fully there.
So just piggybacking on your. You know, your offer here, your point. So if the gate, if it, the opening hasn't been. Installed yet, then. And there's a gate that works that Jordan's talking about, it could. Be adjusted to accommodate the different size.
I actually have two gates. You have both of them.
So, I mean, I. There'd still be a, a change order cost, but I think it would save on the materials maybe.
Yeah, and they're great. We're Brent. I mean, they're, they're three years old. Maybe.
Let, let.
No, yeah, yeah.
Let your bark.
Nine hundred bucks or five hundred bucks.
Let your bark. Let your bark and take them off tomorrow and have them.
So. Yeah, we can move forward with that and get with them tomorrow and. And see what's.
They're just eight foot tall, so I don't know. I don't know what the height is, but.
Yeah.
I would imagine they wouldn't put in four foot fence.
No, they're, the gates, I believe, are, they're eight foot. Pretty sure. So. Free, they're, they're.
There's your two free.
Taller than me. I mean, they're, they're security fencing, so.
Yeah.
There you go.
We have funding that. If it does turn out to be the full. Amount of the eighteen.
Oh, we're pretty much at our, our. Maximum funding at this point with this project, so of what was approved.
So we do approve it. I mean, there's our funding left for this change order.
Oh, yeah. I mean. But not, I mean, that's, this is pretty much, it's one point two six seven million was the project. Um. And this brings it to one million. But then you have engineering on top of that, which is about, you know, so we're. We follow those two things, we're pretty much at the top end of it.
I'm just making sure when, if, if it does end up being the full amount, if it doesn't put us in the line, but I mean, I don't know what choice we have, cause. You know, you're saying. Well, we, we have to fix it or it won't be certified.
Right, and electrician.
Electrician, yeah, yeah, electric, we won't be certified and we can't. During the long.
Yes.
Well, we can make a motion. I'm. I'm saying to make a motion to accept this, um, change order up to this dollar amount.
Didn't, didn't we already go through a motion though? Or did we discuss it before?
I move we approve.
Okay.
Change order for any amount up to. One thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars and twelve cents.
I second that.
We moved sexually approved the change order as presented. Up to the. Any further discussion?
That way, if that works out with them gates all worked, then we just won't use all that was approved.
Awesome, right? Not slow down.
And not have the holdup, have another special meeting for a hundred.
Yes, yeah, save four hundred bucks and cost us five hundred bucks to have a meeting. Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
None being all papers say I.
I.
Will say, motion passed on affirmative. Uh. Police report.
I want to do with it. Oh.
This is the one you're like. I'm gonna have a microwave, a microphone.
Hey. Um, so, uh, July was. Um, incredibly busy month, um, all around through. Uh, helping out other agencies, um. All the way down to DUIs, uh, controlled substance. Um. Certainly conduct fraud kind of. Did pretty much everything in July, um. Large uptick in, uh, activity for sure. Um, obviously with the summer here, a lot more traffic and we're starting to get. Hopefully it's gonna cool down a little bit, but, uh. Heavy traffic volumes in the construction, um, we've had a couple of incidents of, uh, bullying road rage where, um. Uh, certainly the digital decide that, uh, they want to be angry at another driver and, uh. Become aggressive towards that driver and. We get called and, uh, try to inter, intercept, or intersect, intercede before something. Uh, spirals out of control. Um. We've also been very active with the, uh, the DUI task force, um. In, uh. Riverton, we've done some areas showing, uh, county highways, um, and. Incidents of wrecks and bodily injury and especially alcohol related accidents has, uh, precipitously dropped. The more we've done this, it's, uh. At the state level. We, we have been the model for the state of this. Program, we're the first ones to do it. Um, as a county with all the individual officers or police departments involved. Um, working in cooperation, uh, for that goal of changing behavior and saving lives. And it's been a, uh. Massive success. Fremont County at one time was the per capita was the, the worst county number one in. Alcohol related traffic accidents and deaths per capita in the entire country. Uh, we no longer are. We have made a large impact of that and. It's taken out. The. Coming together of all the different enforcement agencies within Fremont County with the same single goal, and we've been. Very successful with that. Um. So much so that, uh, we're continuing to. Uh, ramp up efforts and secure the funding. As being a priority for YDOT to ensure that funding remains with all the budget cuts and it's, uh, and clawing back some funds. That's one program that, uh. Is the poster child of success of. Paying officers overtime to go out and make a change. Uh. Obviously, we had, uh. A lot of. Interaction with other agencies, uh, that continues. Um, and our endeavors to continue to. Crack down. Be illicit. Use self-controlled substances and. Shoshone and Fremont County as a whole. Um, that does continue behind the scenes. We are still acting, and that's where that position that, uh. Officer Smith was so vital in doing those. And that's where, um. The continuation of that. Position is. Extremely important for us to continue to be able to do that. Um. We are. Trying to. Work on some other initiatives here in town. To reengage with the community as a police department in other ways besides just fighting crime. So. I'll announce some other little things that we're gonna try and do to engage with the community in a fun, productive manner, um. We are a small community, but it's fun to get out there and, and do some of those little games that we do on the side and, and school district. And hopefully, uh. Have a good turnout and a, and a good, um, positive reaction to it. Uh, definitely, uh. Our new officers, it's taken. A little bit of time for them to get. Intertwined with the community, um, now that they've been known to the community like Troy, um. Been here for his whole life, uh. Uh. Jesse, same thing. I mean, a lot of people in Shoshone already know, know them personally, so it's nice having. Keeping that. Commonality with. New officers, but they're not necessarily new to the community, so it's nice having that. Definitely want to keep. Reaching out and re-engaging with the community. So they get to meet new officers, because some people might not know who they are. They knew who Matt was, they knew the utility, because they knew. And now we have kind of a new face going on the police department. It's, it's good to have that reconnection, so. That's gonna be, uh, one of our secondary, uh. Forward. Uh. The last thing I will say is that this week we're passing out, um. Two week notices to clean up yards, so. Uh, those that have refrigerators, couches, uh. Garbage. That. Make the town look like it's in disrepair, uh, they will have two weeks according to ordinance to clean it up. Uh, after that point, uh, ordinance, um. Is the mayor has the. The right to launch the premises and remedy the situation or is designated. Uh, which would be myself and the public works director. And we plan on if that's not remedied, um, serving them what they. They have a proper word would be, uh, cease and desist, but notifying the, we have the town is going to remedy that situation if they don't. And then we will take it to the town yard. Um, if it becomes abandoned property, that's a process legal that we want to work with the town attorney on. If they have to, you know, they have a chance to come to the tree, they don't think they can sell it to offset the cost of cleaning up their yard. All those types of things will work out with the town attorney, but the fact is that. We are going to take matters into our own hands and get this cleaned up. So.
It's a. Dumpster open.
And I don't know, it's still open every other Friday and then Saturday or.
I honestly don't.
I don't know. They don't communicate much.
I don't think that the two week notice is to make sure there's a Saturday that dumpsters open within that two week.
Uh, that's, I want to give them every opportunity.
We want, we want them to succeed, yes.
You know, I don't want us to have to go do it, but it's got to a point that, you know, we need to clean this up and. If they're not gonna do it, we'll do it at their cost. Um. And then finally, the ambulance, um, should have the decals on it here. It's, it's ready to operate, um, after doing some, uh. Um, further looking the best avenue approach, is there's two programs that we can do, um, to get. Uh, people certified to be able to run. Now, it's very basic here that they can do, but it, you have a broken hip or, you know, a broken leg, we can get you transported. Um, do basic, uh, first aid treatment while you're in transport to the hospital and get you somewhere much faster. Uh, it requires about forty, forty eight hours of, uh. Training. So it's not. Very big burden, um, and that will get the maximum number of people certified to be able to run on an ambulance. Initially, so that way we can have more coverage. We'll have all the officers on that. And then we're looking at in January, putting on the, the full EMT class. It's a hundred and fifty five hours. It's gonna take about four months. To do. Uh, but we're working on getting that put together, so I just feel that that's the best approach, that we do it this way so we can. Start having more people available, so there's one or two EMTs that we currently have, having. They're not EMTs, but it's a different classification, but they can, they can, they can basically give you oxygen and. And do wound care and compression, things of that.
Kind of stop the bleeding.
Yes, which is pretty much what you're gonna be doing anyway. In, in those types of situations, so the biggest thing is gonna be to evacuate to a higher level of care, um, but that way we can operate immediately. More. Than just. Four or five, you will have a, much more availability. And then in January, we'll be putting that class on, which would be a basic EMT class, um. And. That's kind of the plan here, so we are. I'll have the announcement out, um, we'll start putting out the information in the mayor's newsletter, how you can request the ambulance, um. So. You'll know, the citizens will know when it's available. That way you're not waiting forty five minutes if you need. Evacuation by ambulance, we can get you there, butt wicker. As a whole.
Ninety nine. Nine zero one's not gonna work.
Well, so, um, they, they dispatch for frontier and that's a whole different ball back that we're gonna have to work through. Uh, they can't deny us, they can't tell us we can't respond. Um, so we're gonna work through that and go through that, uh, process to ensure that. We are being, I mean, the, the thing is though, is that when the police officers are out. And they dispatch an ambulance, we hear it on the radio, so it's not. We're gonna work through that problem and get that resolved. But I just want to let everybody know that we will be responding here.
So they don't want to, they wouldn't just, uh.
I don't know, we haven't done it yet, but.
Dispatching, there's more, the closest.
There's been some people said that they're not going to, others, yeah, so.
That accounting commissioner said they, they wouldn't. Uh. In particular. Which county commissioner would that be? Could, could have been a representative for our area.
Oh, yeah.
But anyway, there was, there was discussion.
Yeah, but the whole idea with this is to be able to provide the citizens of Shoshone with. Assistance in response where they needed the most.
Yeah.
And, but. It's not about making money, it's not about taking profit from another company, it's about doing this right for the citizens of Shoshone, that's what.
That was the whole drive from the beginning when we started this was to help Shoshone because we were. Getting much help.
Crash out at the manita. Crash out at the Manita Triangle. Long drive from Riverton to Atlanta ambulance.
And also, um, the one thing that's been asked a lot is. Uh, by citizens that when we transport them, are we gonna make them go to Riverton? Um, and no, we're not gonna make them go to Riverton, so the only time that we would maybe do that. Is if someone is so critical that seconds count. And that's the closest we can get you, you don't have, you know.
Responders thought they might not make it.
Right, but outside of that, if. If councilman nor Dean breaks his ankle and he, and he can't walk and he can't drive and he is going to the ambulance for whatever reason. And he says he wants to go to Thermopolis, we can take you to Thermopolis. Not that you would break your ankle or God forbid, you don't wanna go to Thermopolis, but.
You know, why not? It's uh, what would be the requirements? Uh, from the town to have. Someone to be able to drive the ambulance if they just needed someone to, to drive the ambulance.
So that'll be through our, our town insurance, um having a uh. A driver's license. Um, would pretty much be the only requirement. Um, obviously, there's gonna have to be a little bit of more uh thought into.
May need to adopt a policy on.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not gonna just be so much, just gonna have a driver's license, anybody can drive, there has to be some kind of policy.
Day that hadn't where any firemen could drive.
When I was a deputy sheriff, uh, and there was a major crash and both EMTs had to work on the patient. I drove the ambulance. This was, you know, Laramie ambulance down, you know, Albany County.
Mm-hmm.
Different, so every agency is a little bit different, but um, yeah, we have to have a, a policy of. Not just letting any, you know, Tom, Dick, or Harry drive the ambulance, but. In effect, having a, a driver's license, you can't drive.
Yeah, I got a certification from a racing organization that I'm qualified to drive two hundred and thirty miles an hour.
Yeah, I don't want you driving an ambulance.
Qualification.
So.
First responder or.
Yeah, it's gotta be a little bit of, of. Not just, you know, some eighteen year old kid.
Right.
You know, is gonna just, you know, hop in and drive, but um. But I just wanna announce that the, the ambulance is operational. And it will start responding to calls for service. And.
Yep, good thing. Maybe if possible, we crashed it, done a lot of work on it.
If possible, we could adopt policy on that next meeting.
Yeah, I, I, you know, the town attorney is gonna get instant puts on it, just to kind of protect the town as best we can.
Right.
Not limit us, we are a small town trying to do the best to get citizens there. Ideally, the police department will facilitate most of that, but. Sometimes, you know, as we go through this, having additional personnel are gonna come into play and what's the best avenue approach for that. That's all I got.
Any, anybody have any more questions for the chief? None being. Jordan. Do you have anything for us? Round table.
Yes. Uh, bulk facility out on Chauvin Road, um. That I've always seen for the last ten years. Um, instrument energy. Um, previously crashed or previously. Energy previously. Prior propane. Is going to be no longer here. Um, they decided they're gonna build a facility. Other state with what's there, um. I'm gonna get offered me a job to relocate. Um, I've been thinking doing what I'm doing, however, I declined that offer. And won't be relocating with this company. And then do solve taking the balloon severance, but with that being said, uh, the twenty sixth. Will be flaring off the remaining product in those tanks. For that to move. Um, so probably need to look at maybe adding that to some sort of our agenda. Make the public know. See, see if they go fireball down there.
Okay.
That uh, nothing's on fire, it's controlled, uh, it's gonna be steak down. Everything's fine. I've already contacted. Um, Mike Streeter with the fire department.
Mm-hmm.
Um, however, late time it's a protein propane issue when it comes to the. Fire department, they contact me because they don't have any training in that regard anyway. Um, and then at that point, they contact China, so. Long story short, Mike said, thanks for making me aware. If we get any calls, I'll know what to say, but. Trust you in what you're doing, so. They're aware. Um, I've talked to Chris about what's going on. Police department's aware, um, but we should, you guys know what's going on as well. When you see a flame going out there, nothing's on fire, maybe a little loud. Ground will be respectable and be in working hours. Uh, but that's what that will be. So this, really all I got in that aspect, um, and then at some point. I'll probably be a crane in there and tanks will be. Setting on a trailer and then hauling out.
Hate to see any business leave.
Wasn't my choice.
Yeah, I know.
Canadians.
Yeah.
So, yeah, um, and that being said, like the gates, um, that's, you know, we'll. Uh, gladly give that to the town, um. Let's just already come out and grab some concrete barriers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to utilize for the town in whatever aspect. Um, and anything else that I think might be beneficial to the town. Rather than it just be left there or put in a recycle bin.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll make the city guys know and well, in the first crack it, that some of that.
You bet, I appreciate it.
So, yeah. That's what I got.
Mark.
Are you around?
People tell me I'm turn around.
Okay, beyond that, um. Um, so Thursday, uh, in the afternoon, we were mid to late afternoon.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
What do we got going on?
Going to see Harriet Hagman.
Yes, that's where the. So it may have been the afternoon, though I may be.
Maybe around there.
Yeah, like. Three, three, four o'clock.
Four o'clock.
Yeah, I, I should be around.
I think I'm coming in and chat with you about this.
You bet. So, yeah.
So what's good in the period for? On Thursday.
Sure, yeah, I was, that was part of what I was gonna say, it's uh, she's having a Fremont County. Town hall meeting. And. So it's a pretty good thing if we can, we can make it, I don't, I did. I got, I got an invitation from Harriet's group and. She'll have asked me to attend, so they. She's a good, good accent, you know, she did her part on giving our land, you know, for that shooting complex, and she got that through Congress. It got killed in the Senate. But she did get that land we were looking for and. Where we would be able to put that shooting complex in Fremont County, she did get that through Congress. And she worked really hard. Uh, overwhelming people on real, if you, and she's very personal, very down to earth type person and she does these. These uh. These town hall meetings, even where some of her, she's got roasted pretty hard. You know, but she's still, still with traveling around the state and doing, doing that, she's always. Uh, been real responsive to Fremont County and the rest of it, but she's, she's been good to work for, so. Yeah, she would. Well, I guess I'm a known friendly base, he likes to see known friendly basis. I got an invite, I, I actually got a personal invitation to come. But it's a good deal for the town, we can any, I encourage, I think any of us should, should. Should go up there. It's, it's good PR for the town.
What is that?
It's, it's gonna be at the Military Museum in DuBois.
Okay.
But yeah, that's, yeah. I talked to Jordan earlier, I was gonna bring that up and. I encourage Jordan to go up also. That's good for. And it is, so. That's, that's what I had on the phone.
So I will plan on being.
Okay. I, I got your number, but I think that should be, should be planned.
Okay.
And uh.
I, I don't know if I'll go, I, I might have to be in Thermopolis or say that. Meet with the future.
So, but that's, Jake.
I've got nothing that needs to be brought up today.
Okay, well, I was gonna talk, talk about that, uh. Yeah, so we're already done that, uh, just wanna talk a little bit about the curry. Last weekend, they had a hundred people show up.
Wow.
Ninety people filled out applications. They said they were hoping to get forty to fifty, they'd be excited, be huge. They thought, they want at least twenty or, you know, it'd be, they'd be okay. But a hundred. They could not leave, I got a message from them that. And through the, the whole deal with, with multiple people. In, in our area, the school district and uh everything. They seen more community support for this facility in Shoshone than any other facility they've had or started up. They were, they were really impressed, they got some pretty good people there. Showed up, uh, so I think they got a good pool of people to choose from. You know, they really have good insurance, they have good retirement. They figure they get six percent match on that, the four one K. That's it, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good healthy match and. It's a cheerful benefits insurance and. You know, we're not a. I think they're gonna be really good. For sharing to show, I'm excited about them. And then just, we're just continuing, I'm gonna be talking after this meeting, I believe, with. The guy, Gary Itoch. They've done that, who I've been dealing with with women cardio pulmonary. He's been out of state for a while, we're gonna discuss where exactly we're at, what we're, our, our next move is. We got a deadline, September first, have an application and if gonna get in this. Quarter, you know, but I, I actually been looking at some of the thing, they, they got some proposed changes with the business council. And uh. Uh, I was wondering, they reached, asked me to review some of that, so I think it's, most of it's really good. I, there was a few things had a few issues with. But it may even be more advantageous. To wait till December to submit an application, but that would, they definitely wouldn't be breaking ground next spring. They did that, they wouldn't be breaking ground, you know, till late summer probably. You know, so that's what they're doing and I, I need to meet with Patrick Edwards, gonna try to do that maybe even tomorrow, work immunity. And uh, I told him I'd be trying to talk to him and see what Gary and I came up with and. And let's see what he believes we should do.
They just need to break ground.
Oh, I agree. It's there, I, I think Gary is up to him, we would be already breaking ground. Uh, but there's a group of doctors, like a lot of professionals, where they all have a ownership in the practice. And so, the everybody, that's a lot of investment, a lot of money. Uh, they, they're just, they're getting despite five hundred thousand, that points fifty thousand a year, you get two points, it's a hundred grand. And so they can lower their interest rate a little more, that, that's where they're at. So I, I don't know, I'm doing everything I can to, you know, try to get them to. To move forward on that, business council has tried to, you know, that's doing everything they can and just. It may. Involve slip involved and see if they can help make it more. More attractive. That's, that's basically it. And don't forget, everybody can dossier be about dedication tomorrow. Anybody who's happened to catch this, ten o'clock at the, at the school. So. Other than that, I. I would entertain if I know somebody has something else, entertain a motion to adjourn, actually I do, okay, please, so.
Uh, regarding the uh sale of building, whatever the project is, I just wanna bring up the procedure. Just remind everybody again, so the way it was done with DIMAC is the way you're gonna have to do it, you'll have to advertise. You're gonna have a public hearing, you're have to put out the plan to everybody in the public hearing. You'll have to have a discussion, public hearing. Allow people to talk and then vote.
Yes.
To approve it, I just wanna remind everybody.
Right, thank you.
So, that, that's the way.
Yep.
Just. I, I just wanna remind everybody.
Sure. Which bill, let me tell you. Town, the old town hall, they sell that property.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. Any, any, anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
In honor of Tannenbaum, I moved to Weezer.
Well, thank you for doing that.
All second.
Yeah, I'm moved by Councilman Nordean, second by Councilman. Yeah, Councilman White, now that we adjourned. Any further discussion, none being all pair say aye. Aye, both the same. Motion passed at what around eight twenty eight or seven?